Another good morning to everyone. I'd like to remind everyone to please make sure that the cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston U2. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on the Assistant City Clerk Jennifer Smith for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilman Williams is absent today. Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Toles to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
As we compose our hearts this morning, we give God all the praise and all the glory. We thank Him for this day and we thank Him for this opportunity that He's given us to be able to come and share with our fellow colleagues and also with the citizens in the City of Gaston. We pray, Father in heaven, for our country. We pray for those that are sick and we pray for those that are trying to do the best that they can in a situation that we're in. We just give you the thanks and we thank you, Heavenly Father. And as we continue and conduct business this morning, we pray that all that we say and do be done decent and in order. We thank you and again, we praise you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll have an update and we'll have an update by our EMA. Mr. Josh will come and give us a update for the emergency management.
Good morning, everybody. How are you?
Good morning.
Director Gaither sends her regrets. I am filling in for her today by providing this report. She's fighting some allergies and was afraid that her voice might not come across very pleasant with the crackling and the head congestion. So, I'll just jump into the COVID update. Numbers tell the story. I wish I had better news for everybody. As of 8:00 AM this morning, there are 415 confirmed cases of COVID in Edwah County. There have been an additional 140 new cases added in the last 14 days. So, you can see, we're still on that upward trend. We haven't plateaued or peaked yet. The total number of individuals that have been tested in Edwah County stands at 7,483, or roughly 7.2% of the county's population. A couple of new things that we wanted to mention. We have been moved to the moderately high category by the Alabama Department of Public Health due to the number of infections that are present in the county per capita. So, that is of a concern for us all. The ADPH website is updated once daily. That's usually by 10:00 AM. So, if you go, you know, 11 o'clock, check on your lunch hour, those numbers are not going to change until the next day. So, that's been a little source of, not necessarily question, but it's been a source of some answers from, or some questions from the public that we've had to deal with because it would look like, you know, the numbers we added, let's say, for example, 22 cases overnight, one night last week. Well, that was just because of the way that the number reporting failed, that it looked so large. Currently, there are several confirmed locations in Edwah County that offer testing. Southern Immediate Care in Itala, they offer COVID testing, as does Care Plus in Rainbow City. The Edwah County Health Department is offering testing on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. Citizens will need to call and make an appointment ahead of time. The last report that I had was, you know, there was a pretty significant amount of people that were trying to get testing. So, there is a little bit of a backlog that they're having to work through. But they can call the Health Department for more information on that. Their telephone number's 256-547-6311. And then, the last of the four locations, or the last of the five locations that are offering testing in our area in the county, the Emergency Department at Riverview Regional Medical Center is also a testing site. Speaking of Riverview, they are hosting a drive-through clinic tomorrow at 303 Bay Street. Most of us will remember that location as the old Medical Arts Building. Riverview's parent company owns that site now and leases out physician space to different physicians. But they're going to be doing a drive-through clinic from 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM tomorrow. They will need to have an appointment to be seen. To make an appointment, call 256-442-4153. That's 256-442-4153. And all of this information is going to be posted on our social media pages as well. So, if you didn't get the numbers, we'll make sure that that gets pushed out today so everyone can be aware. Another distressing fact that I'm here to report today, two of the largest age groups that are affected in Edwah County, as we saw last week, one of those remained the same. Those who are between 25 years old and 49 years old, they make up approximately 41.5% of the total number of cases in the county. That's a huge number, and that's a large segment of the population. It's a prime concern for us because individuals in that particular age group have what at home? Children, babies. So, that's of concern for us. We're really trying to push out with our social media and also with our public education, information specific to that age group. The second largest age group are for the individuals between 50 years old and 64 years old. They make up 21.4% of the number of cases of COVID in Edwah County. And you can see from just those two numbers, that's approximately 62.9% of all the cases in Edwah County are individuals between 25 and 64. Two very large at-risk populations. Other numbers, newborns to four years old, 1.54%, ages five to 24, 16.64%. And then, those over 65, 18.92%. Another news of note, again, not necessarily good news, we're currently seeing a spike in our healthcare professionals, our healthcare providers, our nurses, physicians, health aides at extended care facilities. They have shown a spike over the last 10 to 14 days, which is concerning. Overall, our numbers continue to trend up over the last 14 days. The testing that was held at Dwight Baptist Church, Councilman Cannon, I know you will be glad to hear this number of those who attended, which it was a very well-attended clinic. We had a lot of people turn out. We were able to test 118 individuals, which is the second-largest group of site testing that we have done thus far. The statistics from that clinic are still pending. They're still making notifications. But as we get more information, I'm sure Director Gaither and subsequent reports will provide that information to you. And then, lastly, I just wanted to underscore again the importance of continuing to use common sense when it comes to COVID and precautions. This is a very true statement and it's one worth writing down. The biggest threat that our county faces from COVID is complacency. We get comfortable, we get complacent, we get relaxed on our personal protective equipment that we use, we get complacent on our social distancing. So, vigilance, a stance of vigilance is the most important thing that we can do. There's a lot that we're still learning about with coronavirus. Safest place still is at home. If you do have to go outside, do have to go outside your home, just use common sense. Take the common precautions. Wear a mask. Continue social distancing. Use good personal hygiene and disinfect common surfaces and do that frequently. So, that's Director Gaither's report for this week, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have at this point.
Josh, I appreciate you coming for Dever today.
Yes, sir.
This might put you on the spot, but can you maybe tell us where the hot spot includes and are some of the hot spots in guests and what section of town, or do you have that?
Well, really, Councilman, it's, you know, there's not really one particular hotspot. You know, we're seeing an increase countywide in the number of positive cases that we're getting. Now, as far as Gaston Metro, you know, it's still pretty much the same location seeing the increase in cases that we've seen previously with East Gaston, with, you know, the locations over in West Gaston with our homeless population. We're still seeing numbers trend up in those areas. So, but, you know, citywide, nothing has come down yet. We're still on the upward trend.
I know in Alabama City and South Gaston, Walla Park, we were staying pretty good. I know in the last couple of weeks, we've, you know, heard a bunch more cases over in there.
Absolutely.
And I didn't know if that was due to the homeless or what it was over there. We've got a lot over there that has it now.
Yes, we do.
Did you want to say?
Yeah, I just had a quick question. I got a call from a business owner yesterday who said they had an employee who went to be tested, I think at the Health Department, on June the 12th, and they tested negative. And then, yesterday, I guess, or the day before, they had been notified that they were directly exposed to the virus, and they went back to the Health Department, and the Health Department told them that they would not test them again if they had already tested negative. Is that true?
I don't know, Councilman. I'll have to, I'll have to follow up with-
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind. I mean, they were, they were able to find somewhere else to get tested.
Right.
They had just asked specifically, said, "Is that, is that the case? Once you get tested once at the Health Department, you can't be retested." So, I just was trying to get some clarification on that. Thank you.
Well, and I would say that, you know, knowing how, how difficult the testing supplies are to come by, it wouldn't surprise me that that's the case, but I'll definitely track it down and get an answer for you.
Well, and what I told her too, is the individual who contacted me was, there's also some, some clear guidelines. Once you've been tested, you're supposed to quarantine.
Right.
So, if you're following the rules, you shouldn't need to be retested seven days later.
Absolutely.
Because you should have been at home the whole time.
Absolutely.
Got it.
I'd like to ask, I know that you all would sort of get some information first or close to it.
Yes, ma'am.
But have, have the EMA and the Health Department heard anything from the Governor's Office as to, since our numbers are spiking, as there going to be something that's going to come from the Governor's Office? Have you all heard anything?
We have not, Madam President, at this time, heard anything specific related to additional orders. You know, the safer home order continues through July 3rd. You know, it's, it's really a situation of, you know, we're all in the same boat on, on this one. You know, sometimes we, we are fortunate that we do get information ahead of time, but with this pandemic, you know, across the board, the, the information sharing has been rather slow at times, just across the board with all organizations because, you know, equipment is taxed, personnel is taxed, everybody's tired, you know, it's, but we'll definitely, if we get word of anything, I'm sure Ms. Gaither will pass that along to you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
And, and this may be hard to, to figure out, but is it any way you all can track the false positive test? Because, and the reason why I'm asking that, that's the reason why I wasn't here last week.
Yes, sir.
My son had tested positive at the Health Department.
Yes, sir.
So, he was in contact with me, so I quarantined.
Right.
And then, as soon as we, he took the test that Thursday, that Monday, he got the results. Okay? So, we all went and took tests.
Right.
He went and took another test, and he was negative. So, it was, and then, everybody that was around, including my grandbabies and all, everybody tested negative.
Yes, sir.
So, I asked the Health Department this question, and they said they didn't track it either. But is it any way, because I know three other people that took the test and was positive, but nobody in their family that they were around, you know, tested positive, and they didn't have any symptoms. So, I'm trying to see what's the reliability of the test.
Right. Well, as, as far with specific, specific aspects of the false positive, overall, the false positive rate is very low. It's less than 1%. But it's just like we say with tornadoes or straight-line wind damage. You know, straight-line wind damage can cause as much damage as an F1 tornado. So, it really doesn't matter which one it was, I mean, if you've been affected by it. So, in your case, specifically being directly affected by a false positive test, all of our numbers come from the Department of Public Health to the County 911 Director, who then in turn notifies the appropriate agencies that have new cases. As far as tracking the, the number of false positive cases, if the Department of Public Health doesn't track it, then I know as an agency, we don't track it either because we get our numbers directly from them. So, it would definitely be a statistic in a perfect world that would be beneficial, I would believe.
Well, thank you.
All right. Thank you for coming and tell Ms. Gaither we pray that she gets better.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. As we continue with our agenda, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Public Safety Committee work session in the council meeting that was held June the 16th.
Shall move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of June 12th through the 18th.
Shall move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of accounts.
Proclamation. Unfinished business. We have an ordinance authorizing conveyance of property located at 107 Seventh Street North. This ordinance was presented last week for the first reading. Lolita Early has offered to pay $1,000 for the property. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution, this ordinance.
Shall move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
This is the time and place to advertise to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of an ordinance rezoning property located at 246 South Fifth Street from a B2 general business district to a B1 neighborhood business district. And the Bailey Mac, on behalf of Big G and Little V, requests a rezoning in order to allow the property to be marketed for commercial or residential use. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Is there anyone to speak in favor? This ordinance was presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Our next item is a resolution authorizing acceptance of proposal from Cafra Engineering Consultant, and this is for the completion of construction administrative service for the East Gaston Community Center project, and the amount is $10,136. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Shall move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any new business?
Yes, Madam President, I have one from the Revenue Department, asking for unanimous consent or resolution of pointing car rigs and Ingram to audit the accounts of the City of Gaston for fiscal year of 2020.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution under new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous, unanimous consent for consideration.
Okay. Thank you. Move for adoption, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any more new business?
Yes, Miss President, I have one. It is a, I'd like to ask unanimous consent, please. It's a resolution authorizing contact, contract agreement between the City of Gaston and Edwah Board of Education, enabling the city to install a friction strain system to offset any potential adverse effects created during the borrowed pit excavation located adjacent to the Hoax Bluff High School.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution as an item of new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt, please.
Second.
Are they in discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right, Madam President, I've, I've got several here. I'll start with the, let me make sure I'm in order here. Well, I'll do the, this is a resolution requested by the EMA, authorizing translator site lease agreement with CapStar Radio Operating Company for the use of the city communications tower and building located at 909 Bellevue Drive to install, maintain, and operate equipment. It's my understanding that this is an iHeartRadio service upgrade, or they're installing the service. It'll be a new service for citizens of Gaston, the iHeartRadio programming. I'd ask for immediate consideration of this.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution as an item of new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
And the next, I'm, I'm assuming, I don't know if we can vote on these together or if we need to do them separately, but one of them is from the Legal Department, document number 2020-357, requested by the Revenue Department. This is a resolution authorizing the application and acceptance of the coronavirus relief funds in the amount of 1.677 million, excuse me, $1,677,217 to be used for expenses related to COVID-19, and I would ask for immediate consideration of that.
Second.
Do we need, you want me to go ahead and read the next one and, and pass them together or do them individually?
Can we do both of them?
Okay. The next one is the follow-up to that, which is simply the ordinance amending the fiscal year 2020 general fund budget for the funds received from this application. And again, I would ask for immediate consideration of both of those.
Second again.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider both the resolution and the ordinance as items of new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution and the ordinance today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt both.
And I just want to clarify some of the uses of that 1.677 million. 285,000 will be used for personal protective equipment for staff, Gaston, for the City of Gaston. 268,000 will be used for cleaning and sanitation of city facilities. 234,810 will be used for medical. 167,721 will be used for teleworking expenses. 184,493 will be used for workplace safety preparation. 335,000 of that will be used for payroll, including an allocation for hazard pay for first responders. And an additional 200,000, one, excuse me, 201,266 has been allocated for a small business grant fund that will be set up and administered by Downtown Gaston Inc. and Gaston Commercial Development that hopefully will provide up to $3,000 for small businesses in their help recovering from the coronavirus pandemic. So, great job again to everybody involved at the city who pulled that off. That's fantastic news.
Clerk, will you take the vote? Have we voted on it?
Yeah, we voted on it.
Okay. You're just doing a comment on it.
Yeah, I was just summarizing what was in there.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Are there any department reports, committee reports, board reports? We have two citizen requests. We have Mr. John Anderson, Emma Sampson Monument and Forest Cemetery, if you'll come and give your name and address to the podium. And our time limit is five minutes.
Rock, rock.
Okay.
John Anderson, 2200 Cypress Circle, Gaston.
Is the microphone on?
2200 Cypress Circle, Gaston. First of all, I've never been to one of these, never thought I'd be up here, and was glad to, glad to see it start with prayer and to pledge allegiance. The first thing about Emma Sampson, I'm starting to notice, think people are, the dialogue's getting really dicey now. And I can't say everything I'd like to say, even though I doubled up on medication from the VA today. I listen to Sinatra, so I'm trying to be as polite as I can. So, I did make some copies of some things that are on the internet that is out there, that some of you might want to see and possibly know these people. Emma Sampson didn't ask for that time in history. The moment shows her. And I'm not a historian, but I took a deeper look into it, and she was one of 12 children, single mom. Her mother was a single mom. Dad died in 1958. Her mother was actually the niece of James Van, who was a Cherokee Indian leader. I was unaware that up to 300 Union troops had came to her house, got water, took their food, took their weapons, took their ammunition, took their horse saddles, and took her brother. I had no idea. It's not on the statue. So, when the Union left, of course, burnt the bridges. Everybody knows the story. They're headed to Rome to burn it. Confederate troops show up. She gives them information. They got my brother. This is where you could cross, and that's all she did. She just gave information. She's a 15-year-old girl, and I think anybody that would see their brother, their oldest brother taken, they would have done the same thing, gave directions. Like it or not, she didn't pick that Union, that Confederate general. She got chose by the time. In history, she'll always be judged in its own timeframe, not today, not 300 years ago what they done. It needs to be judged by then. Of course, luckily, Forrest did capture the, the Union troops. So, with her help, she kept Rome from burning, probably hundreds of lives lost, and she got her brother back. She was not political. She was just a 15-year-old girl that was doing the best she could with that, in that period of time. Moving her to Forest Cemetery makes no sense at all. She's not buried there. She's buried in Texas. She has one nose. When I look at her statue, I also notice the bridge behind her. Does anybody know where War World Memorial Bridge is? World War Memorial Bridge? That's Broad Street Bridge. It's dedicated in 1920 after the troops were killed over in World War I. They didn't know there was going to be a World War II, so it's called World War Memorial Bridge, and it has a list of those dead on it. Are we going to get to the point where- Are we going to get to the point where we move that bridge or tear it down? It would look good out in Coates Bend, maybe across Turkey Town Creek. Most of those dead are sons and grandsons of Confederate troops or heritage. You gotta draw a line in the sand somewhere. You can't continue with drinking the Kool-Aid and the chaos. If we're going after ghosts, we're cowards. Focus on what's important now and not worrying about what a 15-year-old girl did to survive at the time. The problem is people don't know her history. It's not even on that monument. As far as changing Forrest Cemetery's name, I don't think that's an option. I've got plenty of family buried there. That's where they want to be buried. And I don't think anybody, once you start tampering with monuments and cemeteries, you're going to get a quiet majority and patriots that you usually don't hear from start to get vocal, and they're gonna, not gonna want to do business here. Leave old history alone. It's not that bad having that statue out there. She is Gaston. She is Etowah County. She is Alabama. People have no business up here talking about removing her. Uh, one other thing I'd like to say, I've heard mention, uh, Law Gray. I knew Law, and it'd be nice to see a street or anything named after her. She was a fine person, and I don't think, uh, knowing Law Gray like I did, that she'd be up for messing with cemeteries and monuments. She'd be telling people, put their head down, get their butts to work and better themselves. Um, that's pretty much all I got, and I appreciate y'all having me. It's just an old Marine's opinion. I don't usually get out in front of things like this, but sometimes you get fed up. And I know I'm not allowed to say people's names or things like that, so I do have a copy of Texas out there, because I think the city has the right to know. And got any questions for me? Let's just leave, leave some history alone. Would, and we don't know our history. Nobody knows about the bridge. You know, it, it's a monument also, and we gotta draw the line. Let's just make new history in our own time that is, is better for us.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you for your service.
Okay. We have Mr. Larry Suttles. He wants to talk about racism in Alabama. Name, address, uh, five minutes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Larry Suttles. I live at 2322 Hill Avenue. I would like to pass these, uh, two pictures along. These are my children and nieces and nephew. To start this off, so that council can all see it. I was raised up here in Gaston. I grew up here. I was ashamed when I got chased years ago as a young man. But when I come through high school, junior high school and high school, you couldn't never tell it. Uh, here is one of mine. Classmate can tell you. I never talked about this. I went in the military. I come back, then left again. Uh, couple of years, several, well, I would say about 10 years ago or so, when Walmart was still over here. I had a little boy that's three years old, called me an N-word. And I was hurt. I looked at his parents, and I, I looked at the little boy, and I just walked off. Because I've been in the military, so I learned to accept a lot of things. Now, I had his hat up here with me. This is a totally different thing. I almost went to jail with his hat. I was told about this store, going in this store, they follow you around. I recorded this. Now, me and my wife went in the same store. I went in to look at this hat. It had one of those barcodes in it. So, I asked the lady to take it off. She took it off. I tried it on. Then I asked the lady to put it back on there. She said, you going to buy it? I said, yes, I am. She said, I ain't gonna put it back on there. So, I walked around the store looking at other things. I get to the counter, I had the hat on, walked around the whole time. Because several years ago, the youngsters used to walk around with the tag on the hat. So, that's what I did. But when I get to the counter, I put the hat on the counter, paid for the hat, paid for the gloves, put the hat back on my head, and then went back out the store, along with my wife. And as I was pulling off, and I know this is racist, it's got to be. As I was pulling off, these two ladies jumped in front of my car. And I get out the car. They said, well, we looking for an older black man just come out the door with a tag on his head. And I said, where he at? And I kept looking around. And the lady asked me twice for my hat, tag on my hat. I said, no ma'am, you cannot have it. And the third time she put her hand up there, I said, if you take, put your hand up there, I might have to hit you. I have a receipt. I reached in, got the receipt, to give it to the lady. She never even looked at it. And I asked her where the manager was. Went in there. They said the manager won't be back for 30 minutes. I waited till the manager came back. I spoke with the manager. I asked the manager to call the police. And when they showed up, it was about 15 cars showed up because my grandchildren and my daughter was outside. But the thing was, I recorded all this, and this is hurtful. Being in this city and being like that, it is crazy. And I think we all have a concern and can make a difference. My father taught me this a long time ago. He was with the NAACP, the SCLC. When your blood bleeds, it's the same as mine. There is no difference. And we should all be proud to hug and tell one another, we are perfect Alabamans. No different than that, because our blood is still always going to be the same. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Larry, I will say something where you're going to sit down. I did, uh, kind of grin when you said, asked him where that old man was. Because I tell my, my kids all the time, we're places together. I say, look at that old guy, and the first thing they say is, well daddy, you're probably older than him.
All right. At this time, we have, uh, we'll start with you, Mr. Back.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam President. So, I'm the classmate that Mr. Suttles was referring to, and I'm, I'm proud to be Mr. Suttles' friend and, uh, classmate for about the last 43 years, I guess, something like that. And, uh, sure am sorry for your experience. Uh, appreciate the comments made today. Uh, first want to start off by wishing Eric Wright a happy birthday. Happy birthday to Eric. Appreciate what you do, especially on this work that you and Lisa Rossar and Frankie and the mayor did on this COVID funding. That 1.6 million's going to make a difference for the citizens and of Gaston. So, that is, that's, that's exciting, especially for our first responders, the equipment, the help that, that, that they're going to get. Very, very excited and very proud to be a part of that. Uh, I've been saying for a few weeks now, y'all, this, uh, nothing's changed with this coronavirus. We initially went into a lockdown, shut down our country. Then we realized that economically, we, that's not feasible. So, we've kind of slowly opened up our country again, in our states and our cities. But the virus has not changed. It's still there, and, uh, the numbers prove that out. The report that was given this morning. Uh, we, I believe we are probably getting lax and getting comfortable, uh, getting a, getting a little too brave. And so, you know, I don't like wearing this mask. Uh, you know, I've, I've never washed my hands as much as I have in the last three months or whatever, and I don't like the, the hand sanitizer because it smells funny. And, and so, nobody likes this, but it's not really up for us to like it or not like it. What's it, what we need to do is be responsible as citizens and be respectful of other people and do what is currently required and suggest, not required, but suggested. And that's wear a mask and, and do social distancing and, and stay home as much as possible. It's, uh, it is inconvenient. Nobody, I don't think anybody is really enjoying it. But, you know, I, I have some friends that are in the hospital with this, and I don't think they're enjoying that very much at all. And their families aren't enjoying it either. So, think before you act and, uh, and, and think of others. Uh, and through this whole time right now, you know, everybody's real sensitive. Everybody is just on edge. Everybody's skin's real tight right now. I've been saying this for three or four weeks. Take a step back. Take a deep, literally, take a deep breath, and, and let's, don't let emotions rule the day. That's the worst thing we can do as citizens or as elected officials or fathers, brothers, sisters, whatever. Try not to let your emotions get the best of you. So easy to make comments on social media that you would probably never make if you were sitting with someone in person. Try to think of the other person. I've been talking about our hearts. I think our nation has a heart problem. I think our hearts, if we're better, we wouldn't be having a lot of the conversations that we're, that we're having. I, I pray for my heart, my heart first, before I pray for your heart. I want to have a better heart. Pray about that. Think about that. Think about what that means to have a better heart. What does that look like? How does that look like in everyday life? Try to treat others the way that you want to be treated. Try to speak to others in a, in a manner that you want to be spoken to. If we could all do that, I think we could all probably have a little bit better time during this awful time of this, uh, coronavirus. Thank you very much.
Mary, you have any comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, uh, you know, today is the 23rd of June, and I don't like the mask either. But if you take them off in the car and in the house, that's good. But if you go out in public for the next two months, which will be August 23rd, let's see what the difference in the numbers will be today in that time. So, when you're out in the public, wear them. And if you, you know, if you're in your car and all that, that's fine. But let's just see what the difference in the number will be when we do two months of comparison, if people start wearing them when you're out of your vehicles or out of your house.
Councilman Worthy?
Well, I can tell you the numbers are going to go up because, uh, Friday, I went down to the fair, drove around and videotaped it, sent it to our attorney, and thank you for answering. Yeah, you got it. Because you said ain't nothing I could do, we could do, uh, fuzz the social distancing. Uh, it might have been Saturday night. That may be a day, uh, okay. But, uh, the thing about it is, nobody had masks on that I could see, and they were standing right next to each other. It's a long line to get in the fair, and it's just, it just doesn't make sense. They not taking it serious. And I know a lot of these people are young, but your age group is catching it now. Then we had a block party at 10th and Tuscaloosa. There's nothing wrong with having a block party. But my thing is with this coronavirus that's still here, and like the councilman said, it's not gone anywhere. They were all bunched up, talking and having fun. There's nothing wrong with having fun, but have a mask on if you're going to be that close. If both of us have a mask on, then that cuts your chances way down in contacting, uh, contracting the, uh, coronavirus. Now, I didn't say anything before about the monument. Uh, because I was, I'm on the Public Safety Committee, so I was going to wait and let this Public Safety Committee, uh, take it up. But I, I missed last week, so I don't know if they took it up or not. The, the information I got, they didn't bring it up. But to my white brethren, to my friends, think about it. I, I went there in a sense. Have you ever asked a black person how they felt about Emma Samson Rebels, us having to chant, "Go Rebels", knowing the history of this country? We come from slavery. When the Massafatian Proclamation came through June, uh, then June 10th, on the June the 19th, when the, uh, last slaves got the word in Texas that they were free, the contrisposa gave us 40 acres and a mero. They didn't. So, we came from nothing, and we worked our way up. So, and people talk about pull yourself up by your bootstraps. We didn't have any boots. We didn't have any straps. But we have made it in spite of, no matter what happens to us as a race, we, we are praying people. We pray about it. We're religious. And we work our way up, even throughout all the races, Jim Crow, everything. And these monuments is just like you having with the terrorists, with Osama Bin Laden. Would you like to have a monument all around the United States of Osama Bin Laden? No. They were traitors. They fought against other Americans and killed other Americans, and then we have names after them. And I was, uh, speaking with the white gentleman not too long ago, and he said, well, why now? Why you didn't say something back then? Black people always say something about it. You all just, white people just didn't say anything about it or didn't hear us when we talk. So, now, we have a lot of people that, after what happened to Mr. George Floyd, has galvanized not just the United States, but the whole world. They marching everywhere. It's 2020, and listen, I, I'm not a NASCAR fan, but I am now. I am now, and I, and, and I'm optimistic. They put that noose in Bubba Wallace's, uh, uh, garage area, but did you see all the drivers and the pit crew falling behind him? Then he broke down. It's 2020, and we still have this going on. Well, if, that's, that's part of your heritage too. You hang in, black people. Do you want to put up some noose everywhere? No. So, it's time for us to come together. It's time out for racism. And I think this time, because let me tell you something. We had more white people marching Sunday than we had black. So, if white people tired of it, imagine how we feel. Just put your, uh, self in our shoes for a minute. And then you wonder why we have high blood pressure and everything. That's why. And I just got a text saying that the, uh, CDC, uh, CNN breaking news, the next two weeks are critical in African-American community as the COVID-19 numbers start to increase. And particularly for those with underlying conditions, i.e. diabetes, hypertension, heart and lung disease. The COVID-19 hasn't left. But we as a country, it's 2020. Now, I've raised my hand and swore to the Constitution five times. One time when I went on active duty in the Army. One time when I, I went in Alabama National Guard. One time when I became a police officer, and twice since I've been on the city council. Now, I didn't mind going to fight and die for this country, even though this country was not living up to, to the promise of the Constitution. And then, I'm going to say a couple more things about the letter that Sheriff Harden wrote. It is our constitutional prerogative, the First Amendment right to march and protest. We don't need a permit in the City of Gaston if you marching on the sidewalk. And to say that we, I've been at all three of the protests. They said that we are agitators and all of this. It's not true. The, the marches was peaceful. The first march was peaceful. The second march was peaceful until we got to City Hall, and you had counter protesters out there. They broke two lines of police. They broke the county line, two of them. They broke across the city police because the county was watching the counter protesters. The city was watching the Black Lives Matter protesters. And they became into our crowd, and they agitated. And it's got a couple of them riled up, but we handled that situation. The police did an excellent job coming over there, getting them and moving them out. But they was the agitators, and you didn't say a word, Mr. Sheriff, about the counter protesters in your letter to the city. And talking about arresting them. For what? If they was doing violence, yes, no problem arresting. But nobody was committing any crimes, but other than marching. And we are better than this. This is 2020, and I'm really, I know y'all tired of hearing it. But just imagine how we feel. We tired of having to say it. Thank you.
Councilman Kenny?
I don't have any comments today. Uh, I would like for Councilman Reed, when it gets his turn, to, uh, talk about the COVID fund we're going to get. The police officers are going to get that $1,000, if you will, Councilman Reed. When's your time, please?
Sure. I think y'all finish it up right now, Johnny. I think, uh, police, upper police officer.
I think police, upper police officer, sworn officer in the fire department will receive a thousand dollars. All police officers, firefighters, first responders, sworn duty officers will receive a thousand dollar one-time bonus, which is absolutely great. Johnny, you need to expound on that if you want to.
I was just, I was just gonna say, I'm thankful for the mayor's office, Frankie, the mayor, Eric, and Lisa Ross for getting this COVID money, and we could be able to help our first responders on the scenes and stuff. They mean a lot to us. I know we had a discussion maybe a month or so ago about hazardous duty pay. But I think with this money coming right there, they'll benefit a lot more than it would have with that little couple of weeks we was gonna give them. That's all I got.
Councilman Wilson.
First of all, something I think, everybody's pretty much covered the coronavirus bullet points. But obviously, I stand with everybody up here and recommending that y'all please wear your mask just when you go inside the gas station. Just keep one in your glove box, keep one in the side of your car. Throw it on, go in the gas station, come out, take it off. It's not that big a deal, and it can have a tremendous impact. And another thing I'll point out about the mask is, and I think in a lot of ways, it reflects the selfishness of today's society. I went into Lowe's a couple of days ago, and I had a mask on, and an older lady was there who did not have a mask on. And when I walked by, she kinda looked at me funny because I was waiting for the space to develop for me to be able to walk past her safely. And she said, "Oh, honey, I'm healthy, you don't have to worry about me." And the point I want to make there is, we do not wear masks to keep ourselves from contracting the virus. It is a selfless act to wear a mask. You are wearing a mask to prevent other people from becoming infected in case you are asymptomatic. You don't wear a mask to keep from getting the virus. You wear a mask to keep from giving it to somebody else. So, I ask y'all all to keep that in mind when you go in somewhere. I mean, there are elderly, vulnerable people in our community right now that will most assuredly die from this disease before it's all over with, who would have otherwise still been standing and living and walking with us. And that's an incredibly tragic, sad thing for me to think about. So, please, just keep that mask in your back pocket, keep it in your car, and use it every chance you get. Second thing I'll say again is about this coronavirus funding, the hazard pay that we've talked about for weeks before. I just want to, again, commend the mayor's office and Eric Wright and Lisa Rossar and everybody who worked so hard and had a steady hand and understood in the beginning, when everybody was upset and everybody was screaming about it, and we were trying to get something done, these guys understood that we just had to wait until the right time. And because nobody knew how this grant funding was gonna go, nobody knew how this reimbursement program was gonna work. And now that we do, I'm very proud that not only, you know, I know some of the articles that were shared early on were cities giving their first responders $400, $500. I think actually, some local municipalities gave their first responders $200. I could not be more proud that we are writing checks for a thousand dollars. And that's what it means to care about your first responders, I think. And I hope they see that as a genuine gesture from this city council. Same thing with the small business grant funding. The mayor and Eric and Lisa worked hard to get clarification on what was an otherwise very confusing subject about how we could do that. And so, now, as many as 150 businesses in this community will get a $3,000 grant to help get them through this and to keep people employed and to keep driving our economy forward. So, again, congratulations. This is a good day for the city of Gadsden because of the hard work of the people in this administration. Also, unfortunately, it looks like Mr. Anderson has already left, who spoke earlier. But hopefully, he watches this online, maybe in review. And I just want to say thank you for your service. I appreciate everything you've done and every sacrifice you've made for this country. I won't belabor the point. Everybody, I think, is very clear about where I stand on the relocation of the Emma Sansom Monument. And I want to emphasize the relocation of the Emma Sansom Monument because, you know, I've said a few times before, a lot of times I feel like people in this community don't necessarily understand who their friends are and who their enemies are. And I want to make it clear that my proposed compromise was an attempt to save that statue, okay, to preserve it. Because let me tell you something. Emma Sansom High School was done away with fourteen years ago, when it was consolidated, I think. That means the last, or the first group of kids that didn't graduate from Emma Sansom High School are 32 years old right now. Those kids don't have the affinity to that statue that so many of us from, who have been here our whole lives, may have. Those kids don't have an attachment to it. They weren't taught to glorify the Confederacy. They weren't taught to, you know, to look up to these monuments. It just wasn't part of the way they were brought up. So, what I'm trying to tell you is, ten years from now, it's very possible that there may not be an appetite to move this statue right now. Although, I think it's obvious that over 50% of our community finds that statue hurtful. But there may not be an appetite to move it right now. But I'm telling you right now, not moving that statue now is signing its fate. Because in ten years, in fifteen years, when this subject comes back up with a younger group of leadership sitting right here, that statue will come down, and the option to relocate it won't exist at that point. It will simply come down. Again, I've said this before, time does not move backwards. So, I apologize if my approach to this was misreceived by this community. I've certainly had a lot of feedback on my position on this. But I just want y'all to know, I was trying to save the thing. I was just trying to move it to a cemetery where it could be preserved forever. And I feel that what we've done here has most assuredly sealed the fate of that statue at some point in the future. And that's disappointing, I think, for everybody involved, and I don't think it's what anybody wanted. And the last thing I'll say on the subject is, again, I've made it clear where I stand. If there was some way to put together a task force in this community that could study different options for what we could do with that statue, I think that would be a great idea. But I do soundly reject the idea that this has just come up out of nowhere. As Councilman Worthy said, this has been a recurring issue in this community for decades. And in fact, and the fact that maybe certain individuals didn't feel comfortable enough or safe enough to speak out about it, that's true. But, and certainly, the events of today have given a platform to discuss this again. But to think that that statue hasn't been hurtful for, again, almost 50% of the population of Gadsden for a long, long time, is just dismissive. It's dismissive of your neighbor. And again, I just saw an opportunity to offer a compromise. So, if the opportunity ever comes up to be a part of a compromise, I will always jump at the opportunity to do that. In the meantime, I guess we just have to deal with the reality of our actions as a community on both sides, and we'll see what comes of it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Reed.
Sure. I've been kinda solid on this all along. I respected the protesters, the way they committed themselves, the police force here locally and how they conducted themselves. But I have a feeling, not just locally, but watching all the news, reading all the news, we're getting divided strictly because we keep talking about it, talk about it, they kind of divide, divide, divide. I saw when the nationals brought in Marxism, socialism, communism into this, that they're taking over the movement. And that, to me, is not very healthy. Locally, I believe we've got a good movement that's for peace and try to make some changes, and that's fine. But when you have a socialistic person come in and you bring communism and Marxism into it, it bothers me highly, highly, highly. I was sitting there last night, and this lady came on, and she was talking about, from this movement nationally, stained glass windows in churches, break them out. White Jesus, burn them, whatever. It kinda woke me up to the fact that sooner or later, the blacks and the whites, they can do what they want to in Seattle and Minneapolis and wherever they got that garbage going. But locally, if the blacks and the whites don't come together and ward off this communistic Marxist thing that's eating us alive, we're gonna go down, we're gonna go down together. So, all I can suggest to you is, if you want to defend our country, start right here. And the blacks and the whites better stand together. If you don't, we're gonna lose it all. That's just my way of thinking. Thank you.
Like to thank Ms. Jennifer Smith for assisting us today. Our city clerk is out, she's not feeling well. Also, I'd like to remind everyone about the summer feeding program that's at the East Gadsden Community Center. A lot of people, I've been going over there volunteering. A lot of people doesn't know anything about it. So, I'd just like to announce that. And I know that the public out there wants everybody to say something about what's happening. And I've said it before, what the public out here in Gaston want, everybody up here, I love these gentlemen, even though I try to help them a little bit. I love every last one of these gentlemen up here. So, I'm not gonna fight with them because that's what the public wants. What they want is for us to act a fool, to clown, to disagree. And we can disagree, and yet we can come together. So, I'm going to say that we as a body, we were elected to take care of the city of Gaston. Whatever you all want to do with the statue, that's fine. But I want my part of that money that you use to do whatever you do with it in my district, to pave roads, to fix different things, because that's what we were elected for, is to take care of the city of Gaston, to take care of our neighborhoods. And that's what I want to focus on. Yes, we all gotta come together. I said, and this Rossar heard me say, that even when we get raptured up, and I know you all don't want to hear about Jesus and all of this, but when we get raptured up, racism, there's still gonna be some folks that's not gonna go with us because black and white and yellow and red gonna all be together. So, if you don't like me, you just drop your hand and go on back down. But until Jesus come back, we gonna have all of this. We just gotta work together, and we just gotta do things together.
Let me speak for these guys, they didn't tell me to, but we all love you, trust me.
She got the gavel.
I move for dismissal.